All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone. Hi. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met in executive session and interviewed a new resident, Ross Thomas, his four children. He's interested in becoming involved with the township, so we told him all about our boards and commissions, and he's going to peruse them, and we hope he joins us. He's a very nice man with a lovely family. Okay, we have a presentation tonight, and Andy Hamilton is going to talk to us about the 9/11 Memorial Trail and Circuit.
Thank you very much.
Welcome Andy.
Good to see you all, indeed. Let me start with the circuit if I may. The circuit is a system of trails in the nine county region, five in Pennsylvania, four in New Jersey. It's the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission region. It's 750 miles of planned and completed trails, about 370 of which are completed today. In Doylestown, I left a map on your desks, I lurked up there and left you a few pieces of paper.
Thank you.
In Doylestown, there are two systems of trails that are part of the circuit, and that's the 202 Trail, completed, and the Nishamini Trail, completing. And in 2013, Doylestown provided a letter of support for the circuit, which is great. I'm back tonight to ask for resolutions of support. We're going to all of the municipalities that have the circuit trails on them to get these resolutions. The circuit is really one of the strongest advocating organizations or coalitions of trail developers nationally. It's seen as one of the strongest organizations to do that. Additionally, on top of the trails that are completed here in Doylestown, the 202 and Nishamini, there's the 202 connection toward New Hope, which is supported by the bicycle plan that was done for Bucks County, and that is a planned part of the circuit. So that's another opportunity to get people to the river and from the river to Doylestown. And that's my presentation on the circuit. I promised to keep it very short. Are there any questions?
I'm happy to see it getting this far, and it's been in the works for a long time. I appreciate your commitment Andy, thank you.
You're welcome. We're looking for 500 miles by 2025.
So you want us to pass on this resolution? Has everyone had a chance to review it?
Uh huh.
Any conversation about it? Anyone have any questions from there? Sir, do you would please take the microphone and identify yourself for the interested watching?
My name is Tim Berger, I'm a township resident, I'm also an environmental lawyer, but one of the things that I did with the township back when the 202 Expressway was being developed was worked on developing the transportation infrastructure projects, TIPS. So every Clean Air Act, and every major road project around here that has federal funding has to have a TIP, transportation improvement projects, and those will typically include trails. And some of the money that got levered out of 202 was to construct the trails, and I would obviously just encourage you, it's a great initiative, the trails are just a wonderful thing. I'm somebody who rode my bike from here when I grew up to New Hope and back, when they were little bikes and we had to go over Buckingham Mountain and carry stones to throw at the farm dogs that would chase you along the way. It's so much better having a trail. But look for, you know, hook onto every federally funded transportation project and offer yourself up as TIPS so that you can get extra funding to lever money that's available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And number two?
Number two.
And not number two, by any means. I'm the vice chair of the board of the September 11th National Memorial Trail. I am a township resident, I've been on the Bike Hike Committee for, I don't know, 10 years? I have no idea. I'm aging. But the September 11th National Memorial Trail, I placed a map on your desks, and it's a system of trails, it's really, it's really a pilgrimage trail. We're connecting the three memorials to the tragedies of September 11th as one entity. It is New York City, it is the Pentagon, it is Flight 93. We've done plans to look at the routing, current routing, and some future routing throughout the entire region, except for where we're capturing the local places of resilience, and that is between Washington Crossing and Valley Forge. And that effort is really significant. We've had meetings with both counties in the room, Montgomery and Bucks. This is again on the circuit, and it is also an effort that will create 130 mile heritage triangle using the Independence Hall, Valley Forge, and Washington Crossing and Eventuality. It's going to connect Doylestown to a lot of places. It's going to create opportunities. Today, I can ride from this, right here, to Philadelphia with only seven miles of road, the rest is all on trails. That's really what's going on through the circuit and the development of the circuit with projects like this, the September 11th National Memorial Trail. We're looking to get support for this effort from all the municipalities, and you can see on the back of this sheet, if you turn it over, some potential opportunities for looking at routing between the Delaware River and the Schuylkill River. None of this is in concrete, there is efforts ongoing in Montgomery County to do some of this, and we're looking to spearhead the efforts to equal the efforts in Montgomery County here in Bucks County, who is doing wonderful things in trails these days with all the Nishamini work that they're doing and the upper trails up above Quakertown. So this one would be something that I would look to have an opportunity for both Montgomery and Bucks to work on together in the coming years.
In terms of support, are you just go, out of, you know, out of my way go kind of support, or are you looking for financial support, are you looking for planning support? What kind of support are you looking for?
Tom Kelso and I have sat down and talked about this trail, and Tom is very interested in this, it's an expansion of the work that's being done here in Doylestown, and the two Doylestown's. And we work in a, on the Bike Hike Committee has four municipalities, five municipalities that are now involved with it on a regular basis. So you're already seeing that regionalism in the bike work. So we're not looking for any financial support, no. We're looking for support from the township so that we can show DVRPC and possibly the federal government, depending upon whether or not we can use a Federal Land Access Program grant to do the study work, we may be able to.
Okay.
And to show the counties and the neighboring municipalities that there is this wealth of support for this project.
So when you need, when you need something, you let us know and then we'll pass on it.
Yeah, I'll send a letter, some draft text to you, the generalized support.
Okay.
All right.
On this slide, on this side here, what do the different colors mean? There's no color.
There's no color key, but they're noted, you see each one of those has a little descriptor on it. So Schuylkill River Trail, Bucks County, yes.
Oh, okay.
And the gap, one color will be the gap in the trail, and others, et cetera, et cetera.
Got it.
All right.
Yeah. Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
On this side, when it goes 9/11trail.com, spell trail.com instead of trial.
That's a good plan. The spell check is really terrible when you put trail in there sometimes.
It's so easy to do, wow, it's not bad because they're two words. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Really appreciate it Andy, thanks.
Uh huh.
All right. Any visitor or public comment tonight? Ms. Berger?
My name's Tim Berger, again, I'm a resident at 26 Radcliffe Drive, but I grew up on Spring Valley Road, and I submitted a letter to the board and to the water authority to just raise some concerns, and I am not really familiar with the Grosso Plan Development, I just know there's one planned there, and I did some internet research and identified that there were some issues about where they would get water supply, there'd been talk about trying to extend water lines down that way, or to develop a water supply well on the property itself. And I've done water supply work, so my assumption is that no developer wants to own a water supply, and no development is marketable if the people coming in have to be their own water suppliers. So the prospect there is then to donate the water supply over, and I just wanted to raise issues that I've come across in my work with wells with the township, because I think they're important to the residents there.
Thank you. We got your letter. Would it be useful for you to meet with our executive director and maybe the director of the water?
I'd be happy to do whatever we think would be helpful.
If you just want to make up the time?
I'd be happy to do it at any point, yeah.
They'll be happy to answer all your questions, and I'm sure they'll be happy to hear your concerns as well.
Okay, and the other thing that I would offer is, I do environmental law, I happen to represent some water authorities in the area in their perfluorinated contamination problems. I do a lot of work in that area, and because I'm a township resident, I'm happy to consult here at no charge for what it's worth.
Thank you.
And would be happy to talk to the water authority or anybody.
If you're just steward, advisory committee that would like you.
I hate Act 537 work.
I know.
Keep me away from that.
How did we know that?
But anyway, I raised my points in my letter, and I'm happy to be of assistance.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Ken Haas is back there, and Nick Baca's there? Or Keith. Sorry Keith, one of these days I'll get your name right. All right, great. Any other comments?
My name's Mary Lynn Strasniewski, I live on Brook Drive, and I read the whole text of Mr. Berger's letter, most of which I understood, not all of it, some of it was highly technical. But I did understand one very big idea, and that is that the construction of what Grosso is intending could impact our wells. My house is only a half mile from it. And so in my view, and I think in the view of a lot of our neighbors, all the issues we've been through over the years, the traffic, the noise, the trees, the whatever, they pale beside any idea that would affect our water supply. So I think we will have some, once word gets out about this, we'll have some very concerned people.
Well, you'll stay in touch with Mr. Berger, I'm sure.
Oh yeah.
Okay.
But what I would like to ask is to make doubly sure, the township has been very good about in the past, all of the many, many issues we had with Grosso, we always got a letter. And the reason I came tonight was to urge Stephanie, who does this beautifully, to make sure that any question about our water supply that comes up, any meetings, any considerations and so forth, that we all receive. And this extends up Spring Valley Road, all down the cul-de-sacs off Rogers, this Valley Drive. There's a fairly large area of people who would be concerned with these issues. And so that's the only reason I came tonight, just to urge you to make sure that we all stay in communication, and that we are allowed to know what is going on.
It'll be the original list, now if you want it to be expanded, I think we're going to have to hear from at least some of those residents to make sure that...
There's about 300 on the mailing list. My guess is, is that's the original list from 10 years ago.
Yeah. I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of this, I'm thinking in terms of location, and I'm sure Tim Berger could be helpful with indicating, you know, if you put a dot down where he wants to put the well, how far out from that do you have to go, and how do those people have to be?
And we'll find that out. Mr. John and I spoke to him briefly this afternoon, and one of the things he suggested was that his letter be shared with Mr., with the developer, so that they could begin to address, because that's, you know, important for them to understand the concerns and everything, and that they can begin to address it. So that was one thing Mr. Berger said, was please take his letter and share it with the developer, their engineers, so that they have an understanding as well as of concerns.
So, does this put the development on hold?
I don't think it puts it on hold, I think they just need to be able to address through the process. They haven't submitted any plans or anything yet, they're in the process of working on that.
Oh, okay.
One of the things they've been doing is, you know, trying to work on, you know, how they're going to do water with the DTMA.
Okay.
And I think where to, as I told Mr. Berger this afternoon, this is a perfect time because they're just on that precipice, so it would be a perfect time to make sure that they're aware of this, and then they can, how they would address everything, and how they look at providing water to their facility and their development.
Okay, thank you.
That well, that just recently got drilled, right? That was a recent event, just to build on what Stephanie was saying, is that this was like perfect timing to get this. So, but the other follow-up I would ask is, what is our expectation with the letter? Will the water authority respond to all those questions?
What they want to know is, no, they want to know, they wanted to notice when the meetings are, necessarily.
That's what she would like, but I think that Mr. Berger has other comments he'd like to address with the developer, make sure we look at these things early and not late.
And they should be aired in a public meeting.
Uh huh.
So those questions will be answered, and those discussions will happen in a public meeting, and you guys will get notice of that.
Early.
Okay?
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear.
Go ahead, interrupt again.
I will. Is it the developers' responsibility, or is it the water authority's responsibility to make sure the questions are answered?
I think it is.
I think both have the obligation.
Both have the obligation. It's our responsibility that the questions are answered.
Thank you.
Ours.
Yes.
You know, we provide the form, we make sure the questions are answered, right? Have we not done that already? Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other public comments? Excellent, thank you. Thank you, good to see you, Mary. All right, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 7th at 4:00 PM. Bicentennial scheduled to meet on March 21st at 4:00 PM. 2017 Stormwater Survey, you can complete the survey, it's really important that we hear from all the township residents. Go to DoylestownPA.org and share your thoughts about the stormwater outreach. Movie and ski tickets are available, contact administrative offices as a side, I went to the movies the other day by myself, I had a small popcorn, a small soda, cost $23.
Oh my god.
So, and that's just me all by myself at a 3:30 matinee. So, the ski, the movie tickets are a real bargain here, because I got a bunch for Christmas, and they're really cheap compared to what you pay them, so buy them here, it's a deal. Nominations for the Unsung Hero Award are being taken, please have them at the township building by March 7th. The township Environmental Advisory Council is having a magnet fundraiser, they're adorable, lovely magnets, they're $5, and you get them inside the administrative office, they're great for your car, don't go in the car wash though, because they'll fall off. Take them off before you run through it. Minutes approval for February 7, 2017, everyone had a chance to see them and review them?
Yes.
Stephanie Mason wasn't here, it was the first meeting, I'll have to say, I said it then, I'll say it now, the first meeting she ever missed in her 20 something years of, she was very, very ill, and we made her stay home. And it killed her!
Her staying home, because I did not infect everybody.
It killed her, but I ordered her to stay away.
Did you watch it on TV?
I did, well, yeah, I did.
She couldn't help herself.
In her bunny slippers. Horrible, it's one of those illnesses, I was like, where's my mommy? That's how bad it was.
Okay, so...
Move to approve?
Move to approve the minutes for February 7th through 2nd, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Correspondents? None?
No.
Reports from the solicitor?
I have nothing tonight, Madam Chairperson.
Chief? All right, Lieutenant?
Lieutenant. In your packet tonight is a letter and some documentation in reference to installation of stop signs on Rogers Road. The letter was addressed, or was dated February 14th, township residents in the area of Rogers Road. Brief summary of the letter, it says that on January 7, 2010, traffic study was completed focusing on the sight distance deficiency on Rogers Road. After the study, the speed limit on Rogers Road was reduced from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. Again, this was to improve the deficiency of the sight distance on that road. A recent traffic study on January 28th was completed and concluded that the speed limit had not improved the sight distance deficiencies on that road. The Traffic Commission met and suggested, or met on February 6th, and suggested installation of stop signs along Rogers Road at various locations. On February 13th, the Commission met and discussed and recommendations and adoption of the new traffic regulation 17-000539, which calls for the installation of stop signs on Rogers Road at the following locations. Rogers Road eastbound at Brook Drive Sansom Circle, Rogers Road westbound on Brook Drive Sansom Circle, Rogers Road eastbound on Coon Drive, Rogers Road westbound at Coon Drive, Rogers Road eastbound at Valley Drive, and Rogers Road westbound at Valley Drive. So on the distance of Valley, on Rogers Road, there'll be three four-way stop signs at that location, again, to help reduce or to reduce the sight deficiencies on that road.
Well, that should, that should work. You know where this plan worked really well, maybe you were about 10 years ago, when they did that on East Street?
On East.
They put on those stop signs on East Street, slowed everybody down, stopped the multitude of accidents. It still didn't help with ICE, but it did help slow everybody down, yeah. Go up to the mic, Mary.
Yeah, I got the letter, and I was going to come and ask one question, and I took a look at it today, and originally, I had wanted to suggest a stop sign at Brook Drive. We have tremendous number of kids that are back and forth there. But when I looked at Valley Drive, and the sightlines there are terrible, but it comes in like this, and Coon Drive is here, and I came through there this afternoon, and I think it's just about two car lengths between those two stop signs, which I don't know how workable that is. The other, the other concern I thought might slow people down, it doesn't have to do with the sightlines, was if there was a four-way stop at the other end of Valley Drive where it meets Nursery Way. That would slow people down going into the shopping center, it would slow people down as they come up, if they came up the hill and there was one stop sign either at Valley Drive or Coon Drive, but maybe not both, because it seems like it really is, I think, just not much more than two car lengths.
I don't understand exactly what you're saying, but even if the roads are a little bit offset, you'll come to a stop sign at Coon Drive, and then after stopping, you can proceed as long as it's done safely. So again, it'll slow the people down coming on Rogers Road, that they'll have to come to a stop and then move forward. So I don't understand your problem or your...
Well, the letter said that a stop sign at Valley Drive.
Right.
And...
At Valley Drive West.
And East.
And East.
And East. And there isn't, I mean, Valley Drive just comes in at dead ends on Rogers Road.
Correct.
Yeah, so we've got a stop sign here and a stop sign here, I don't understand how you could put four-way stop signs at both those places.
Okay, we would just put them on each one of those roads, so even though the roads are a little bit offset, we wouldn't have one where you only travel two car lengths and then you have to stop again. It would just be at the one location, so I can sit and talk with you afterwards, just so we can...
Okay, yeah.
Look at a map and I can tell you what is planned.
Exactly, that would, that would be helpful, yeah, if I could look, because I was, I kept trying to go east, west, boom, when I got the letter. So yeah, I'd like to talk to you afterwards.
Absolutely.
That'll work.
Yeah, saves me a trip, actually, I was going to come and ask about this at a meeting, so.
There you go.
Thank you. This is, if I may make one comment about this, because this was an interesting example, and I have another one I'll share later, but one of the things the traffic committee is starting to look at now, when we have a project, we say we want to implement something, we have the history leading up to it and all the issues, and the number of accidents, or whatever we're trying to solve. But in the past, we haven't gone back a year, two years, three years later, and looked at the data after the change, compared it to the data before the change, and did we get the affected change we wanted? So that is something we're asking the traffic committee now to do more in issues like this. So here was one where the speed was reduced, we thought we'd see this effect, the effect didn't change, so we said we have to do something different. So that's why this stuff is working, this is good, hopefully it works out for the residents.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, slowed me down.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Lieutenant? All right, excellent. Township engineer, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Directors of operation, anyone? Mr. Tom.
Hello. Just like to give a quick building municipal complex update for everybody, as we've basically started to advertise the project. So Phase 1 of the project, if everybody remembers real quick, is the carport for the police, large evidence storage, fleet maintenance building, and renovation of the public works offices for our superintendents out there. So that project has been advertised, was being advertised actually this week. Pre-bid meeting is scheduled for the following week with a bid opening of March 16th, so that is now moving forward. Construction is still anticipated early June. Phase 2, we'll start working with Phillips and Donovan to finalize the plans for this building, as well as the park and rec activity center, with the anticipation of going to complete the bid documentations in the end of June, and with the bid going out in July. So with an award looks like in August for that board meeting. And construction, September is what we're looking at. So we are moving forth, meeting with the interior designers and the construction management firm, interviews this week and next week, and we will have a recommendation, as I said last time, for the March 7th board meeting, for award of proposals for the interior designer construction management firms, as well as our recommendation from the building committee for temporary office space as well as movers. So we have a lot to go over next meeting, just want to give everybody a heads up, if anybody's any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you for scheduling all those meetings. We have six, we have six meetings coming up.
Any questions?
Thank you.
That's it.
No, good job, thanks. So we're on, we're on target, we're on schedule.
Yep.
Perfect. All right. Kids Castle.
Yes, at your last meeting, the board authorized us to send a letter to DCD to see if we could transfer some of the funds that we have remaining from the Century Trail to the Kids Castle, unfortunately, DCD said no.
Give us the money back.
But it was worth a shot.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for trying. That's A for effort. Supervisors, Sean, you have anything?
Yes, only a comment from the EAC. One, they took your request or recommendation to heart about planning for the bicentennial, and they are enthusiastically going to begin planning something there. And that's...
Very exciting.
Yeah, it's going to be very exciting. In addition, a couple of years ago, EAC sent out a informational piece to residents living along the repairing corridors in the township. And EAC had decided to send out a new updated letter along with a pamphlet, and again, it's informational, educational, not instructional, that's going to be going out in probably the next week or so, to about 800 residents, I think, as long as those corridors, those lists have been updated and that. So if you live along the stream bank or waterway, get something in your mailbox, you know what it's about, if you have any questions, contact the township or Autumn here and the EAC to learn more about it, it just kind of tells you the opportunities you have living along a waterway, and responsibilities too. But, so if you hear somebody's getting something in the mail, that's what it's about, so just a heads up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ken, you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of points. Similar to describing the scenario for what happened on Rogers, where we had an issue in that whole process, we did the same thing for 611 South and New Britton Road, where we had numerous accidents in the past, and obviously, we had to get the state involved, and it took some time to get that movement, but finally got some results. We changed the striping, moved some signs, and made a lot of significant visual changes there on that intersection. And we kind of just went away, as far as following it. And I was at another meeting, and we were talking to some residents, and they said, you know, there's still a lot of accidents at that intersection. And I said, wow, I'm not hearing about this. And so what we did is, I sat down with the chief, and he brought to the traffic committee and said, again, it was a perfect set of data, because it matched up three years of data before the change, you knew the accidents, and you look at three years after the change, and the accidents reduced by 50%.
That's good.
Well, it's good.
Except?
Except, is 50% good enough?
You knew the accidents, and you look at three years after the change, and the accidents reduced by 50%.
That's good.
Well, it's good.
Except...
Except, is 50% good enough? So by looking at it, though, and it's not one thing just to put a project in and say, all your problems go away. You have to make sure we stay on top of them. Monitor it, measure it, and then we can talk about...
Is there something else that can be done?
Well, we don't know yet. I'm just saying, the neat thing is that we're putting that process in place to start looking at things where we make changes.
Yeah.
And that led into another discussion we had about committee work. And the Traffic Committee, one, as liaison to Traffic Committee, I went to the Bike and Hike today to share with them the concerns that were identified. Nothing major, but just wanted to highlight where we can make some improvement. And improvement would be that when we have projects that cross committees, that you need support from any of the other committees, that we need to make sure we bring them in and get them aligned, and make sure that work is done as seamless as possible. Where we just had one little blip on the radar was, as an example, for the Lower State Trail project. And the team did a great job working with the Bike and Hike Committee, did a great job working with the residents and Peversall, and went out there and did a lot of communication in trying to resolve all those issues. Well, then, questions came up about Peversall, and what's happening with the traffic at Peversall. So they said, go see traffic. Well, the trail's designed, a lot of stuff is moving. So the request is to try to bring all the different committee members, as we need to, in as early as possible, so we can address the Bike and Hike issues, the traffic issues, and all the other related issues, all at one time. So my request is, is that committee members, chair and board of supervisors, liaisons, that we're always asking those questions. Do we have the right people involved at the right time, and making sure it goes as smoothly as possible?
Yeah, that's really a function of the liaison and the township representative.
Yeah, and I think we addressed, we addressed, when this came up at Peversall, we did talk about...
I'm not saying we don't do it. I'm just saying, I want, I'm just emphasizing to keep it in front of our minds that we do it as much as we possibly can. That's all.
Of course.
Yeah.
You have anything?
No, no, no. I was just saying, I know we talked about the traffic. When this issue first came up with Peversall, you know, we did, we did talk about the impact to the Traffic Committee and bringing them in, so. But, but point taken.
Yep. Good to keep it in the forefront.
Yep.
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, moving on then. Unfinished business? None? Moving on to the emergency operations plan update. Everyone got their new book?
Mm-hmm.
It was great.
Yes.
We need to resolve it? That we updated it? Resolution 1907 is before you. Is there a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nice job, Sinclair. Thank you. I miss my wooden fine binder, though. Or recycled paper cardboard binder thing. The blue one's nice, though. New business? No. Enclave at Town's Edge, Pennsylvania partner resolution for the plan revision. See attached resolution. Got another resolution.
This is for their connection for public sewer. They were required to do a full resolution and submit additional information to DEP versus the postcard waiver that a lot of the developments do. And they have completed all that, and then they just need approval on this. They already have final plan approval.
Is this what we're, I'm going to be signing? I'm holding up this piece of paper here. Because it's...
It's secretary. It would be me, because I'm the secretary.
You're the secretary? Signature secretary? Because it's not complete here, and these things aren't... Should we circle which we are? Township supervisors?
Yeah, I'll take care of that. This is their form, and they don't...
They don't, you can't mess with it?
Really?
But aren't we supposed to choose what we are? Supervisors, commissioners?
Circle them.
Circle them, yeah. Okay. All right, now this resolution page, this chairman signs this one, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, let's do them in tandem. There's a motion for a resolution for the land development for Enclave for the secretary, and for the chairman to sign. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. Thank you. Updating the 2007 Township Joint Park and Recreation Plan, Open Space Comprehensive Plan. Resolutions for that.
That was the, I think that was the second, that one.
Oh, I thought this was for the same. Okay, never mind. All right, going backwards. The other resolution was for to approve the Joint Park Recreation Open Space Comp Plan. Let's do that one specifically.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, got that one fixed. Lower State Road Trail Bid, Michael Baker International recommends... Who does he recommend? He recommends J.G. Morrissey. Everyone okay with that? Low bidder? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That is a low bidder, yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Do you want any reports or anything that came?
Chris, you want to say something?
Yeah, do you want to say something?
You seem like you're anxious to say something. You got all dressed up and everything.
Yes, so I'm going to bring up him. My name's Chris Stanford. I'm with Michael Baker. I'm the Bike and Hike consultant.
You need to do, you need to do that over into the microphone, because I can hear him right now yelling at you. Or me.
He is.
Start over into the microphone. Hi.
My name's Chris Stanford.
Hi.
With Michael Baker International. I'm the Bike and Hike consultant for the township. As you know, we've been working on the Lower State Road Trail project for a couple of years now. Plans are all done. The job was put out to bid in January, and we got bids back in February. We had nine bids. This was all bid through Pendot. The bids ranged from 1.3 to 1.7 million. The low bidder was James D. Morrissey at $1,327,271.35. Our pre-bid estimate was $1,245,118. So it was about 6% over our initial estimate. Adding in all the costs for the project, we had about a $75,000 shortfall when we add in all of the construction costs, all the inspection costs, and compare that to our actual federal grant funding. However, we were able to go back to Pendot, and they indicated if the township could make a good faith contribution towards that shortfall, they would make up the rest. So we talked with the Bike and Hike Committee. And as you probably know, the Bike and Hike Committee has a fundraising fund that they've used to, over the years, folks buy benches, and they sell t-shirts, and water bottles and so on, to help support the Bike and Hike network. And there's about $12,000 in that fund right now. So we spoke with the committee this morning. We were hoping to get approval to use $5,000 of that dollars from that fund to go towards the Lower State Road Trail project. So that's the one thing that we're asking the township to approve tonight.
Okay.
Will $5,000 be enough to entice Pendot to put the rest up?
They've already agreed.
Wow. What a deal.
Go for it.
Yeah. So...
So is there a motion to approve the $5,000 allocation out of the Bike and Hike Fund to this project?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for coming. Okay, and Morrissey was approved, so that's good. All right, now this I don't understand. The zoning hearing board application. They want to put up a cell tower in the parking lot.
They're the tiny cell towers that they did in their, they're these smaller cell towers.
I don't think they're this tiny.
No, I know.
I'm like, are they actually that big?
No. What do they call them? They're the...
Mini towers?
The monopoles.
The monopoles, and they, that's what they're proposing in their...
So they have to go to the zoning hearing board?
They have to go to the zoning hearing board because of the locations and the way our ordinance is set up, so that we have way to control what they're doing.
But the little monopoles. Do we want to oppose that?
No, I think they're following our ordinance, the way we set it up with the new antennas and everything. And everything they've, they're doing it according to the ordinance in this particular one.
Okay.
So I would leave it to the zoning hearing board.
And so, less C.
Less E, yeah. Because that's what they're doing.
I would actually follow it, yeah. All right, so we'll just, by consensus, go to the zoning hearing board, no problem. Not contested. All right, what else? The next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report from February 21st, 2017. Has everyone had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the bills list for February 21st, 2017. Is there a motion to approve it?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next meeting of the board is Tuesday, March 7th at 4:00 p.m. Bicentennial Committee is meeting March 21st at 4:00 p.m. This is going to be the most fabulous year in Doylestown history, 2018. So gear up, spread the word. We're getting fun events, so much fun. So that meeting's March 21st at 4:00. Stormwater survey, please complete it. Go to doilstownpa.org. You need to, you need to, you need to put in your, into your community. You need to respond to the outreach. So do the survey, everybody. Movie and ski tickets. You already know what I said about that. They're available at the administrative offices. Nominations for the Unsung Hero. There's some in this room. They have to be in by, to the administration office by March 7th. And the Township EAC is having a magnet fundraiser. They're $5. They're lovely. They're in the administrative offices as well. All right, there's no other business. Good night, everyone. Be well. Thank you for coming.